Let's call the meeting or roll call, please.
Doemeyer?
Here.
Heesling?
Here.
Clinkhammer?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Reich?
Here.
Okay, nobody in the chamber, nobody on Zoom, so we'll move to consent agenda. Anything held for separate discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Reich?
Aye.
Doemeyer?
Aye.
Heesling?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
That is approved five zero. First item is Resolution thirty-six, twenty twenty-three, Resolution approving pay-up number seven for the Meadows Clubhouse Reconstruction Project. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeremy's, um, did spring break and he wanted to get a couple of days in before it got crazy, so he's not here tonight. It should be self-explanatory. You got a note about, it doesn't include change order though, Beth?
Change order number seven is not included in line number two, um, but the recommendation is to, um, pay the, um, current amount due of three hundred and seven thousand, six fifty-seven, fifty. I also included an update on the value engineering, so everybody can see where we are to date on the project.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution thirty-six of twenty twenty-three, pay it, pay up seven.
Second.
Motion made in the second discussion. Call roll.
Reich?
Aye.
Doemeyer?
Aye.
Heesling?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Just to approve, the next item is Resolution thirty-seven, twenty twenty-three, our Resolution approving contract and bonds with Eastern Iowa excavating for the Hills Mill Road re- Mill Road prod- project.
The submitted, um, the contracts and bonds, and so everything's ready for council approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution number thirty-seven of twenty twenty-three, second.
Motion second, further discussion. Call roll.
Reich?
Aye.
Doemeyer?
Aye.
Heesling?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
That is approved five zero. Next item is Resolution thirty-eight of twenty twenty-three, a resolution to set scheduled public hearing on the city of Asbury, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, maximum property tax, total levy from March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M.
Let me notice, is prepared with the same property tax dollars as what we have, uh, approved the budget with when we went through all of our budget hearings. Um, we are late in the game here because the legislator passed Senate File one eighty-one, which changed the rollback from point five six to point five four. Um, that change in the rollback, um, had the effect of, um, changing our, what we were looking at as a total levy of nine dollars to nine dollars and thirty-one cents. No additional dollars are, um, being collected that were previously, we were talked about. Um, the tot- the whole net effect has to do with, uh, just the rollback being changed. Um, recommend that, um, council, um, move forward, um, setting the date for public hearing for the proposed tax levy for January, or January, March twenty-eighth, um, with the eight dollars and twenty-seven cents on the, um, for the proposed budget maximum and two million, one hundred dol- two million, one hundred thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars in property taxes.
In this motion, it only sets the date. This is not an endorsement of the nine thirty-one versus the nine thirty?
I would like it to be an endorsement of the, um, nine thirty-one versus the nine thirty because I planned a vacation for March twenty-eighth, which at the time when I set my, set my date for vacation, I, the plan was to have the, um, budget approved at tonight's meeting. Um, so the Senate File one eighty-one has also delayed, um, what would normally have been done by, um, today's date. Um, there, if we wait to change it, um, I'm thinking that's too much responsibility I don't want to put on Sarah. Um, if you make any changes on the twenty-eighth, um, because the same thing we would do on the twenty-eighth is we would approve the max levy, and then we would set the date for a public hearing on the budget so that we're finished approving the budget on April eleventh.
Okay.
I would appreciate if we're going to have any discussion, we just have it out now.
We're gonna have a discussion.
So how do we put that, what you just said, in the form of a motion? Because I move that way.
Let's have a discussion first, okay, before we have motions, can we?
Russ, do you want to start first?
We're not trying to cut, we're not trying to cut. I won't, I won't call roll until the discussion, you know, discussion has ceased or it needs to cease.
Well, I guess I'm gonna start. I, I wrote a lot of notes, so please bear with me. Um, one of the things we had at our budget meeting four, uh, weeks ago, uh, I thought we agreed to have another budget meeting if the levy changed from nine dollars. And now this is, it's coming up tonight that, that we want to change it to nine thirty-one. Um, my concerns are we're already raising citizens' annual expenses by forty-eight dollars for higher utilities. I think we can cover the seventy-five thousand dollar shortfall that we have and keep the levy at nine dollars. I did a quick review and I have several ways to cover the seventy-five thousand dollars. Because I think what we talked about the last time was we can increase, we can hold it the same, we can cut expenses. Uh, so I did a quick review and I have several ways to cover the seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, on an annual basis, we historically spend about eighty percent of our budget expenses. The twenty percent savings flows into our cash balance and reserve, if you will. This is more than enough to cover the seventy-five thousand dollars that Beth says we're short. Um, on a revenue side, we've already have, we already have a favorable variance to budget on general interest income by seventy-three thousand dollars. This year, we've got four more months to go. We're making twelve thousand dollars per month, which projects out to a favorable variance of approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which could be used to cover, is more than enough to cover the seventy-five thousand dollars. Also, if we need to increase our budget, next year we budgeted, we budgeted for a forty thousand dollars for interest income, uh, at twelve thousand dollars per month, which was on this month's financial, that projects out to be a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. If we increase the budget to a hundred and fifteen, we've got the seventy-five thousand dollars covered. The other thing that we could also discuss is go back and, and potentially cut some expenses. Um, I know that's what the supervisors are doing and some of the other places. Um, I don't think it's just incumbent that we should increase the taxes. Um, one additional reason not to raise the tax levy is having to explain to citizens when we're spending, you know, having to explain a tax increase to citizens when we're spending three million dollars to remodel the clubhouse. I don't want to have to go back to them and say, oh, that's part of the reason we're raising taxes. Um, speaking of, speaking of the Meadows, there's a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in the contingency for this project. With value engineering, we should be able to save the seventy-five thousand dollars that Beth says that we need. Um, and one last note is that the email Beth sent to the state legislatures, which I thought was very good and very well worded, it did indicate we were at nine dollars for next year, and I think we should hold to that number.
One thing I would add to that is, yes, I said we were gonna change, you know, that levy, we would come back and talk to us. However, timing did not dictate that. I didn't get the new rollback numbers until after we met, um, this last meeting from this county assessor. So I apologize that we didn't call another budget hearing and possibly should have done that tonight for council to discuss this. I did keep the amount of tax dollars the same, so really in what you'd be approving tonight, if you, you know, look at this analysis, um, if you take a hundred thousand dollar home with the fifty-six percent rollback and, uh, the seven ninety-nine value that we had before, and you put Senate File eighty-eight with the fifty-four percent rollback, and it goes to four fifty-two. The net effect to the properties because of the rollback figure is zero, essentially. It's the same number. So in, you know, looking at, you know, what we had originally budgeted for and where we're at now with the higher levy rate, it's essentially the same tax dollars.
So now, uh, to my thinking here anyway, and this is probably more an explanation to Russ and anybody else that was wondering, I suppose, but my thought was, we had originally discussed, or, uh, and I don't mean maybe in council, but it was discussed that we would leave things alone because of the mistake that took place in Des Moines. And just suck it up this year and then fix it next year. Based on your timing of everything and the timing of everything coming from Des Moines back to you, I'm in favor of just letting a sleeping dog lie for right now, and if we need to fix something, we fix it next year.
And what caution council on is with the, um, memo I sent out for today that came from the legislators, uh, they did a legislative analysis. The future does not look pretty, and going backwards this year could bite us in the future in that if you don't already have a high enough value, you're never gonna gain it back. You're gonna have to, um, you're gonna build on what you had before. So I am also cautious, cautioning the council that, you know, now's the time to, you know, take the drink from the trough because it's not coming next year.
We don't know that.
I, I think that a lot of this is very, some of this has been very short-sighted. I've been on council and we had to increase the property taxes by a large amount because previous councils had not, uh, looked far enough ahead into what we're, our future growth and needs were gonna, were to be. And I think if we try to hold this nine dollar number, I think we're setting ourselves up for the, we're in, could be next year, could be the next two years, uh, in which we're gonna have to have very sizable increases, which may be dollar fifty to two dollars, uh, increase. So I think we should look at a small increase this year. Granted, I mean, is nine thirty-one the right number? Well, based on this, it holds our numbers, uh, to be steady, doesn't do anything, doesn't increase our, our income as a city. So I think it's something that we can look at, and it, it's still a max valuation, which of course we have the option at the next meeting if we would want to roll it back any. But because of the situation, I think we need to come to some decisions tonight about it. So I, I'm just afraid if some of the things going on in the state, especially in, in terms of the local option sales tax, I mean, if that is, is truly given back to the state, this will put a dire, have a dire effect on our budget for the following year.
Russ, you said you want to, excuse me, you said you want to lower taxes, right, or you don't want to raise taxes, right? The levy.
I want to keep the levy at nine dollars.
Yeah, and I understand, because you and, you and John went back and forth on this every year, and I, I sided with you. I personally don't care what that levy is. I care what the number I write on the check, right? And your point to John was, John would say, we lowered the tax rate. We lowered taxes, and you said, again, I agree with you at this time, you didn't lower taxes, you lowered levy, but you raised my assessment. So you didn't lower taxes, right? So to use that logic, you're saying you don't want to raise taxes by raising the levy, but you're not. You're raising the levy but keeping taxes the same. So it's, it's the same argument you and John were having for discussion, I should say, but just in reverse.
Well, all I know is I pulled out my property tax bill, which, because we're all paying property taxes this month, um, and I looked at the bill that showed the increases for, um, the past year, uh, that we paid, or, which was probably two years ago that we paid for. But Asbury was at six point some percent, which was higher than the school, higher than the county, as far as a percentage increase. So I just, every year we keep doing the levy, we, we just never brought the levy back down to where it should have been. Uh, using your example, we, we've always gone up more than we needed to go up, and that's why I'm just, this is the year I just thought, well, let's just hold it where it's at.
It's artificial increases based on assessments, though.
Don't you think it's kind of unfair to give the citizens a rate of tax increase for the year?
But as you, as you repaired the budget for fiscal year twenty-three, last year was nine, at nine dollars, a two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar house, they would have paid one hundred, one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. And when we had the nine dollar rate at the point five six rollback, they would have been paying thirteen sixty-seven. So you're already looking at a fifty-seven dollar increase at the nine dollar levy that you, we already proposed and you said you're okay with.
I, I know we can't cut the budget. I mean, I, I, our guys do an awesome job with what they have. The only thing I can think of that would be fair is to go into the reserves. That's why we have reserves. Don't know what they're gonna do next year. Could be better, it could be worse. I'm not a foreseer.
Beth, did you just say nine dollars would have raised taxes fifty-seven dollars? Okay, so nine dollars would raise it fifty-seven, plus then they're going up forty-eight, utilities are going up forty-eight dollars. So taxpayer at nine dollars is pay, would pay a little over a hundred dollars more a year for city services? Would that be fair to say?
That would be fair.
You feel we're wrong to raise utilities forty-eight dollars and we've been in unprecedented, you know?
No, I didn't say that.
Well, but you bring it up like, you know, we can't be raising that because we raised this, and I'm like.
Well, the other thing, maybe the, the other thing that's going in our favor on utilities that, you know, there's very favorable variances because of the high interest rates. We get a lot more interest income on, on those accounts than what we had too, so we may not have needed that much, but we haven't had a increase for quite a while, so I don't have any problem with that. That's, that, that'll go toward the reserve anyway.
Right, and I, and I, and I, E, you know, it would be nice to, kind of, about it. Tip home will be some dollars a year, right, between the nine thirty and nine thirty, that's the number you told me? No, I just say, it, the difference between nine and nine thirty-one right now for a home with two hundred and fifty thousand is, I think you told me the other day, your office was about thirty dollars. Okay, it would be nice to give the thirty dollars. My concern is, and, and you're right, we, we don't have a crystal ball. If I did, I wouldn't be sitting here. But I think it's safe to say it's not gonna get better. The, the, the constraints and, and the pressure on the cities is going to get worse every year. I think your point is, is that this thirty dollar, or this nine versus nine thirty-one, this thirty dollars a year that every, the average resident will pay, could protect the city, could, could make a difference between having to cut services down the road three, five, ten years. That, that's what you're coming from, is if, if we're gonna be limited, we can raise this. So if, if we don't take the thirty dollars now, we won't get it next year, we won't get it the year after, and then we'll, we'll be depleting those reserves, and at some point, we're gonna be borrowing money. And that, there is no, there is no limit on that. We can borrow till the, or, to the hill. And we can raise taxes to ten, fifteen dollars, a thousand by, by using debt service rather than reserves and general fund.
Hey, I would concur with Jim's statement, is that's probably the cautionary tale for the council is, yes, we can use reserves, and we can continue to use reserves. We are very fortunate in the council has set policies where we set aside funds so that when we need trucks and equipment, we can go ahead and buy them. But if we don't have those reserves, we will start down the path, and a lot of cities do this, where instead of, you know, paying for these items, we will have to start borrowing. And, you know, borrowing for operations is, to me, not unheard of. We do an annual appropriation, and that's how we have to run the city.
Could we look at a compromise where you've lowered the taxes, but we've only dipped into half the reserves of that seventy-five?
But, but hang on a second, though. Going down the road, one of the things that, that's gonna change, that's gonna improve our situation is, as I recall at one of our meetings, we said, after we get Hales Mill done, road done, Autumn Road is the last one that we really have to reconstruct, the clubhouse remodels behind us. That's six million dollars that, that, so I think we're gonna still be in pretty good financial shape, uh, even one to two years from now. I do finance, that's what I do.
Well, no, you retired. But, uh, I do, I mean, that's the problem. I mean, look at what, look at what's happened in the first three quarter, three months of the state legislation, what they've done and what bills they've passed, and look what they also have on their slate already in terms of changes and how it will affect the, our city governments throughout the state. I think this is something that is, I, we should be very concerned about and try to be proactive because it's, again, if we do, if we are gonna be limited in the future for how much we can raise, we're, we will end up behind the eight ball. So I guess I'm just trying to get ahead of that and at least to stay status quo for the city and be able to provide the excellent services and the fantastic environment that we do, that we are so fortunate to live in.
But I, I guess where I'm at is, it's seventy-five thousand dollars in the scope of things gonna help us get ahead of the eight ball? It will.
The, when the, when the legislators are capping your levy rate, it'll keep it up there rather than lowering it and have to try to catch up.
Well, Russ, I, I agree with a lot of the points you made. I don't want to look at cutting expenses, um, at least not this year. I'm looking at the argument, if we raise it till nine thirty, and we go back to the legislators and say, we had to raise our number again. You know, we have got, it, it, instead of them saying, we have the money to do it, it doesn't throw any guilt on them. This way, we've got something to go back with all the other cities that go back from the state of Iowa and go, we've had to raise our bottom number because you took away something you shouldn't have. I'd be inclined to have that, want that bullet in my gun more than I would paying it off, which you still can do it next year if that comes to that point. And the other point is, I always like to leave it better than what I have, and I'm a saver more than I am a spender, so I'd be inclined to save a big nut of money till we need it. Because again, we don't know what expenses are gonna go in the budget next year with what we're doing with wages and health insurance, cost of doing business, basically, the city could all go up dramatically.
Beth, will you? And that aren't your point, Russ. I'm just asking for clarification on, because we've talked about this, and I, I'm trying to put, in my mind right now is, we took a big hit this year, a double, double dip on, on the TIF. Right, and there is a portion of the, it is TIF, but that does come out of our pocket. So where do the TIF dollars that we will not be allocating for projects, say FY twenty-five, what number will that be and how will that land back into the general fund?
There are two parts of the property tax dollars. They call them, you know, non-TIF dollars, which is what we see going into the general fund. And then there's, there's the TIF dollars, which then are allocated into the TIF funds, but then what we also get the benefit of in the TIF funds is to receive the county and the school district, um, allocations that, um, excluding any, any debt service, you know, into that. And so that's the, you know, the hit we're taking, you know, for this year. And I would probably forecast in the crystal ball for fiscal year twenty-five is some of the TIF that we're using, you know, now for, um, in fiscal year twenty-four, um, for the Meadows project, that some of that will roll back onto the, you know, non-TIF and be eligible for property tax dollars, and we would have an opportunity then to reduce the levy in fiscal year twenty-five.
Yeah, I mean, I, I worked under the premise that about one-third of every TIF dollar is, is ours, right, I mean.
Would be correct.
So that.
Thirty percent that are collected in total are city property tax dollars.
If and when we stop using TIF, that money comes back into the general fund.
That would be correct.
Rather than being, it's still our money, but rather than allocated to a project, it goes into the general fund for any expense that you deem.
But, but, but then along those same lines, then, is the reason that we need more money in general this year is because we allocated more to TIF? We lost the thirty-one, thirty, thirty-three percent?
The thirty-three, the thirty, thirty percent is just how TIF, how much property tax dollars comes into the city versus total property tax dollars. Basically, the school district's getting forty-nine percent, we're getting thirty, the county's getting about twenty-two, twenty-three, and then there's those miscellaneous. That's what we're talking, the percentage on, is just kind of an overall allocation of a property tax dollars. We're not saying thirty-three percent is in TIF right now, just thirty-three percent of TIF dollars.
I was just trying to clarify what Jim said, is, I thought we were getting more back into the general fund when the TIF number goes down. Isn't that what you were kind of alluding to? So the, so the reverse of that is because we're using more for TIF right now, we're taking money from the general.
True.
spreadsheet here. Um, in twenty twenty-three, our TIF valuations were thirty million. Um, in order to assist with, um, you know, paying off this Meadows project, our TIF is eighty-five million for fiscal year twenty-four. And I expect to go back to like thirty million, um, back in fiscal year twenty-five. So that also changes our, this non-TIF, which is, would be the taxable, um, valuations.
Well, I mean, could we, we, and you've done it in past years, I mean, could, have you be happy if we met in the middle? I mean, it's, it's a give-back in some regard, and it's a little bit of protection going forward with our limits, greater restriction on what councils can do. We're talking about thirty dollars, and I don't mean to diminish that, that is, to some people, a lot of money.
I'm fine with going to nine thirty.
I, I'm, I like the idea of the, trying to be able to split the difference and be in the middle on that, Jim. But I think with what's possibly coming down the road and the caps that may be placed upon us in the future, I think we should stick to nine thirty.
Beth, let me just ask you a, a question, then. If we go to nine thirty, does that require supermajority? Does that put us over the two percent?
No, again, because of the, uh, TIF dollars that we're looking at, um, we are looking at a decrease of twelve percent. So even going to a, uh, nine dollar and thirty cent, uh, tax levy, taxes, the change is twelve percent decrease, so it's only gonna take a majority.
So, so let me, I'm, I'm a little confused yet on the numbers. You said that the taxes would go up fifty-seven, fifty-seven dollars at, at nine, at nine dollars on the tax levy. And then the thirty dollars that you're alluding to, Jim, what is, what, what is that thirty dollars?
What it meant to me is, is a homeowner with that value of a house about what the difference was.
Okay, so, so Beth, then the question I have then is if nine dollars would add fifty-seven dollars to the property tax, what does nine thirty-one add?
Nine, so we're looking at, are you talking with the rollback or not the rollback or whatever?
To calculate the fifty-seven dollars on nine, what does the nine thirty-one calculate to?
Okay, I want to do two things. One, last year, we received two million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars in property taxes. This year, we're looking at two million, one hundred, three fifty-three, which has been the number that we've been talking about through the whole budget process at nine dollars a levy. The only thing that has changed here is the rollback. So that same nine dollars and thirty cents generates the same tax increase as nine dollars did with the fifty-six cent rollback. So if I had a two hundred sixty-nine thousand dollar house and the rollback last year was fifty-four and the rollback, as originally said, was fifty-six. Can you see it now? So there's examples here. We started here this year and I took a median Asbury House. Last year, the values stayed the same. We didn't have any big increase in values from twenty-three to twenty-four. The rollback last year was point five four one three. The taxable value was a hundred and forty-five thousand and we had a tax rate of nine dollars and that generated one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. Now that's for a two hundred sixty-nine thousand dollar. Okay, so two hundred sixty-nine thousand at fifty-six percent rollback, taxable at one fifty-one and nine dollars generates thirteen sixty-seven. So the difference there was fifty-seven dollars. And that's how we prepared the budget. We were going to have a fifty-seven dollar increase average on a two hundred sixty-nine thousand dollar house as the budget was prepared. But then they came about with the rollback. So if I do this up here on top of the rollback, that same two hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars, instead of having the fifty-six percent rollback, it's now fifty-four percent, which is what we're talking about. So we have a taxable value of a hundred and forty-seven. The tax rate then goes to nine thirty-one. We're still solving for essentially the same amount of property taxes that are generated. So. And fifty-seven dollars, no matter, with the rollbacks changing, the net difference between nine thirty-one and nine dollars is still about fifty-seven dollars. So the net difference here, we're still talking the same property tax dollars. The only thing that's changed really here is that rollback figure. And that's a crazy figure and I'll never try to explain what rollback is. But it's what we have to do.
And the, but the rollback is, is the whole reason that we're, or we're trying to leave it as it is because the dollar value isn't really changing that much or not, certainly nothing drastic.
The property tax dollars are the same at a nine dollar rollback as we originally budgeted to the nine thirty-one with the factor changing is the rollback.
I'm, I'm with you. And if you, if we change it back to the nine, the nine dollar levy with the new rollback, then we have to go back and rework the budget. Am I correct?
That's where the seventy-five thousand dollars is, we collect seventy-five thousand dollars less. Changing the levy, the, or the levy rate, the rollback, the. Correct. If we go back to the nine dollars, then the saving, I mean, there'd probably be no increase at all. And the property tax collections decreased seventy-five thousand dollars. That's like thirty dollars a house.
I'm, I'm trying to get something in my head here, so forgive me. But if we change this back to the nine, I understand that we're going to be giving roughly a thirty dollar savings to everyone. But what is that costing the city? Because am I wrong in assuming or understanding that you have to go back and rework the budget accordingly? Or is it just a matter of, oh, well, this is nothing? Didn't you start off by saying something that this would fall on share because you have a vacation scheduled?
Well, that's why I want to decide what the number is now, so I can go ahead and say, we want to publish the max levy rate with the max levy being X. So then I can prepare all the public notices that go along with the budget. So, yeah, so what do you want to, you know, increase, decrease, leave it the same, go into a deficit, use the reserves?
So, so it increases.
You can't use the contingency from the Meadows because that's a whole different source, so that one goes out.
Let me ask you this though, if, if, if we used everything that you did for the nine dollars, for the nine dollar budget, that the nine dollar levy, don't, I'm not advising reducing expenses or changing the revenue that's projected, but the way those financials would work out then is you'd have revenue, expenses, you'd be seventy-five thousand dollars short and then down at the bottom, it would have beginning cash, ending cash, at the end of the year would be seventy-five thousand dollars less than what we have now, right?
Oh, you're, 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 um, want to have the, go into, go into the reserves or into the surplus.
I'm, I'm just saying it would come out of the surplus, but I'm showing where we're putting that all back into the surplus even by the end of this year.
Some of that goes to reserves to, for equipment.
So the bottom line is, the budget as you approved it, two point one million, I'm just talking expenditures, take out, forget about everything else. In order to meet that number, with the rollback, we need to go to nine thirty-one. Even if you, the rollback didn't change, taxes were going up, right? To two hundred sixty dollars. So to your point, you're not going to lower taxes, you're going to lower the increase, right? I mean, that's semantics, but I'm just trying to understand or.
We're, we're raising taxes and we're also raising the utility rate. So this, I'm just.
No, I understand, but.
To the, to the custo, to our customers, the citizens.
They are, but they're two different things and there's inflationary pressures. I'm just talking about the tax thing here. I mean. Increase, okay. In, in order to make that smaller increase, we need to dip in the reserves to the tune of seventy-five thousand dollars.
That's the direction you want to go.
I, no, I'm not, I'm, that was prefaced with, yeah, okay. I, I'm done. I summarized to my own satisfaction.
Is it motion time now?
I, I'm not trying to force it to a motion.
And then just, just to be clear, even this is just for the meeting, establishing a max levy, this whole discussion could come up again in two weeks, right?
We do not want it to come up in two weeks. I want it settled now, today, because otherwise you're going to delay the approval of the budget. So what you want to do today is what we want to publish and put out to the public.
That's not how the rules work. If it, if this is for the hearing, that's, I'm sorry if it inconveniences you, but that's the way it works.
So, again, and I work, I'm, I understand, I'm not, no way am I trying to circumvent anything, so. Counsel can't be held to this tonight. You will prepare.
No, they, I, I will prepare to what they, what they say.
But they have the right later to change.
They do have the right to change next week.
That, I should be very clear on that.
I'm going to be preparing the budget based on what you're doing, this max levy and what you're recommending, recommending tonight. You can go back and change it, you're, of course you can.
Okay. You, you weren't saying that, you, you did say you couldn't, but you corrected yourself in that. They can change at the next meeting.
Hope they don't.
You hope they don't, but, and, and I appreciate you made your, your verification and the state screwed it over and I would not ask you to change your verification schedule, so. To answer your question, Russ, is you are absolutely correct. This is not a binding decision and in fact that you, you as a council can change it next, next meeting. We all clear on that?
The, the only thing that we couldn't change next, this is the maximum that we could, so if it went through at nine tonight, we can't raise it to the next meeting, but we could, but we could lower it.
Correct.
It's the max.
Right. She's preparing the budget based on, based on what she feels is the consensus tonight, which only makes sense. But again, you.
You want to, if council would consider that, that say you want to say nine dollars tonight, I would go back and change this max levy resolution to say nine dollars and, you know, prepare the budget according to that. If you think you want to do nine fifteen, I would do the same thing, nine thirty, same thing.
Just, just as a, as a curiosity point, I know that the supervisors are talking about increasing their levy by twenty cents. Do you know what City of Dubuque is going to do?
Increasing their levy, but I'm not, I have to go back and look what they had projected. I'm thinking it's at least twenty cents.
It's on the change and rollback, twenty cents.
Right.
They were already raising before.
So what I'm, what my concern is, we've always had the gap between, so now the gap becomes narrower. If we go thirty-one and Dubuque and the county are only going twenty, right?
I don't know if we've ever compared ourselves with the county because it's a different taxing authority and I've never sat at this table and saw you guys compare yourselves with the county. Dubuque, yes.
It's a comparative point. Now the county, county's rates like, I don't know, pretty low.
Yes, you're right. Dubuque has already raised theirs. So if we went thirty, they went twenty, we would be a ten, we would lose ten cents in that gap.
Dubuque is setting their max.
The gap is still increasing overall because they were going to raise theirs even without the rollback.
Levy is going to nine eighty-nine.
Difference or is that still be added to that? That's true, yeah. Well, that was February twentieth though. They wouldn't have to because they're in the same whatever other city, you just got your updated.
Levy amounts, even if we're talking about this, the, the dollar rates, so yeah, their levy would go higher if, with the new assessed values.
I'm going to make a motion to approve resolution number thirty-eight of twenty twenty-three with a maximum property tax dollar levy of nine thirty-one.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion continues.
And one of the reasons I'm doing that, just in case things keep going the way they are and we have to raise it next year. If you already go thirty this year, you go thirty again next year instead of going sixty at once, you're going to catch a lot less heat.
Having served on this council, I, I've, I've had to raise tax levy before and I heard a lot. Having served on this council and also decreased the levy, I never heard that much from anybody.
But they see the levy in the paper, but it's, the levy isn't what you really, what you look at on your, is your property tax bill and what did my property tax bill go up or down? That, you know, which is a combination of your assessed value and the levy.
For, they, they don't understand the whole picture of it, is that, more or less? They were looking at just that one micro.
And they don't even understand the concept that part of it's the city and then there's a school district and the county and everything else.
And the fact that the three million dollars TIF that was used with the Meadows doesn't necessarily play directly into that.
Well, they, yeah, they probably don't understand it, but it does play into it.
They just know that their property taxes are going up and that is not a good thing, especially at this time.
But they're not going down anywhere.
Loaf of bread went up, ground beef went up.
If, if you live in the state of Iowa, they're not going down anywhere. I believe so.
Sorry, you still have expenditures just like everybody else. And that was the, certainly the one thing on my mind is, I, I don't have the advantage of having the knowledge that Russ does, but I, I am a businessman and I know that everything, everything in my business has taken a huge hike, everything.
I, I guess I'm, I'm concerned about how we're doing our job. If, if we're going to say the only way to do it is to raise the taxes as opposed to going back and now that we know what the number is.
But you're not raising it.
Wait a second. I, I have the floor. I have the floor. Excuse me. If, if we know what the new number is now, aren't we remiss in not going back and taking one more look at expenses to say, maybe we, maybe we're, we should cut expenses? That's the theme of politics these days is you should be looking to cut a few expenses as opposed to always just adding on the top line. So I'm, I'm.
I will, I will do this. Um, we'll talk in staff tomorrow and, you know, I, I, you always tell me there, there is no fat and, and I understand that you guys manage your budgets very, very tightly, but I can at least say, go back and look. If there's anything you can squeeze out of there, I'm not putting any pressure on you, I'm just going to ask them, I think it's fair for you to ask staff to take a look at expenses.
And I'm not saying they did it, I'm not saying that their numbers aren't good. I, I really do. I, I'm just saying if we had to find, if, if seventy-five thousand dollars is the issue, then that we can find in the budget if we had to.
Well, we always, we can do anything if we have to, right? It's a question of what you, what you want to give up. So I, I, I think it's fair to ask them to go back and look at it. If the answer is zero, it's zero. I just, I, I think it's a fair request to go back and look at it with, with a different, under a different lens now that we know that the rollback has impacted us significantly.
But, but what about the idea that, the one point that I made about, for example, just interest income? I mean, we're seventy-five thousand dollars under on the budget on interest income. Why can't we add it there and we're done?
Because we don't know. Because we don't know it's going to play out that way for sure. I mean, we could have more expenses during the year, as Beth alluded to with equipment or whatever, that we may need that. I think this is the easiest way to do it, you've still got your reserves, if it works out fine next year, it doesn't have to increase, then we decrease again. And you can go that route, but then we do it when we're going through line items, and we're going, okay, we're not going to do this, we're not going to do that. There's nothing that I want to cut out, cut out of the budget that we haven't gone through already. I would not ask them to go back and go through the budget, I think we crunch numbers enough. Just my opinion.
I'll just, I'll just, I will ask them, if the answer is zero, it's zero.
Beth, do you have any issue with telling the legislatures that we're at nine dollars and now we're going to be nine thirty-one?
I can tell them, but I think it needs to come to, from you as, as council members, that the impact on the rollback, and this is what we're facing. Um, I've told them that already, um, but coming from you as council members and elected officials means more.
Right, further discussion? I hear none, all roll, please.
Bryce?
Aye.
Del Meyer?
Nay.
Heesling?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved, four to one, I'm sorry, the, the budget will be prepared at nine thirty-one, you can lower it at the next meeting if you so desire. Move on to ordinance one of two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance amending chapter ninety-five sanitary sewer system, repealing provisions inconsistent therewith, this third and final reading. There's a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion, second, any, any last discussion, questions? All roll, please.
Bryce?
Aye.
Del Meyer?
Aye.
Heesling?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
That's approved, and then we have ordinance two of two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance amending chapter one fifty-two, stormwater management system and facilities, repealing provisions inconsistent therewith, third and final reading.
Make a motion to accept ordinance number two of two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion made a second, any last discussion? All roll.
Bryce?
Aye.
Del Meyer?
Aye.
Heesling?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
That's approved, uh, we will take citizens' input, I assume nobody else is on Zoom, nope. All right, uh, we have reports, stormwater, police, DM, comments, motion to accept.
I guess my only comment would be in regards to the stormwater committee, uh, looking at some of the upcoming projects and looking at that.
Thank you, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, roundtable, Bob?
Uh, yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm going to start with the Meadows, since that's the biggest item we've got going on right now. I was out there last Friday, and I'm amazed how much space we have downstairs with the, with the wall down going into what was the pro shop and the bar out of there. I think this is going to work out really well. Um, upstairs, it's going to be bigger and brighter than I imagined, um, at least right now. I think it's going to be something we're going to be proud of, and the neighbors out there, I've heard from several of them that are very happy that we're going to have a menu, they're hoping to enhance that menu as time goes on, but they're very happy that we're going to have a nice place for them to go at that end of town.
Thank you, Russ. Karen?
Craig, I guess the only thing I'd have to comment is, I'm a little disappointed that the Telegraph Herald didn't have a representative here as we discussed this, and, uh, we talked a little bit more about the, how the state legislation rulings are changing, are affecting us as a city, so, uh, other than that, uh, let's, the only other thing would be the cycle road interchange, and I've driven through it a couple, three times today already, and didn't have much issues, but did see cars kind of jump their gaunt spot on it. So, we could still see accidents out there, it's not always going to be the interchange, it can be the drivers.
Thank you, Kurt?
Uh, what Craig said was true, I was going to comment on the, uh, the intersection out there, since, uh, normally I don't go that way too much, but I've been driving out there a lot lately, um, but believe, that sleeping dog lie with, uh, his comments. The other thing that I would like to bring up is, I've been approached on three occasions in the last week to ask the council to bring up the issue of ATV and UTVs, uh, on the roads again. And, uh, in response to those requests, I'm, I'm putting it out there to, uh, to get it back on the agenda for discussion.
What's, what's happened in six months to do that?
The citizens have, have asked to bring it back up, to, to put it back on, on the council agenda, I get what you're saying, but, so that's what I'm, I'm doing as their council member, is bringing it...
That's fine, I'm their council member, too, I'm just asking you. I've had people ask why they can't have garbage outside their garbage can, I haven't brought that up, I'm, I want to know what's changed, bring all those people and get all that up where we're going again, if nothing's changed.
Thank you, yeah, I think that's probably the only thing, Craig's point was that it, it's getting to be springtime, and I think people are, are interested in, in getting out and riding, so they want to bring it up again, so that's...
But that's my point, they haven't done anything since we did it in six months, it's been winter. So what we discussed last time, nothing has changed. I could see waiting nine months until we have a spring season where people are using them again, but if they haven't been using them all winter, I don't know what's changed. You're, you're totally within your right to do that, I'm just asking you, before we start a fury about something again, what has changed to throw light on this, on the subject?
Along those, those same lines, are you proposing not to bring it back as an ordinance, but as a discussion, or how, what, what are you proposing?
I, I wanted to bring it back as a discussion point, uh, to, to see if we need to change something. Obviously, if there's three people out there, there's probably more that want to see this brought up again. They, we're not very, very happy with what we decided last time, apparently, and they want us to have a discussion, bring it up again. So, as a representative of the city of Asbury, being contacted by the citizens of the city of Asbury, and, uh, I'm, I'm just bringing it to everyone's attention, that this has at least happened to me, I don't know if anybody else has had any contact or not, I don't know whether, you know, the city administration has had any contact or not, but I have been directly involved, because I've been directly asked to bring it up again. The question to me, uh, at least on two occasions, was, what do we need to do to get this back on? Well, I said, you can come to the city council, there is the beginning and end of every meeting is citizen input, you can ask for it yourself. Or, you can ask me, and during the roundtable discussion, I will put it out there that there are citizens that want to bring this back again. And that's what I'm doing, no, no offense to anybody, and I, I realize it's a discussion issue, and it's, uh, it's, you know, just that point.
I, I guess I'm with Bob, I don't know what, why we want to put ourselves through that again, but at least this soon, that's my opinion.
Okay, anything else? Kurt? Okay, um, I don't, Beth was in the ordinance or the, the code of conduct, or whatever the rules that, that, that we have, any two council members can request that an item be placed on the agenda. I've stated in the past, and I'll reinforce it again, that if the council member felt something strongly, wanted to be up for discussion, I would put it on just based on that one. I'm going to, again, talk about how I put things on the agenda, just because I don't put something on the agenda is not me playing games with the agenda. If a resident or residents have a concern, or have an idea, or something that I don't put on the agenda, they still have that podium twice a night, they still have your email addresses, they probably can find you in, in Hy-Vee, or they, 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 they can, they can call you, so. The agenda does not mean things are being held away from council, or I'm silencing residents. It just means it isn't formally, you can take an action on, but if they want to line up this podium with five hundred people that want to put a statue of Bob Raysh in the park, maybe one or two you agree, and it could happen, but again, the agenda is only, it does not stop people from speaking, it does not stop them from contacting you. The agenda is put there in a manner that we efficiently use your time, and we talk about issues that are important to you and important for the residents, that is subjective. You think it's important, you two don't, doesn't mean either of you are wrong, just means, and I have to waive, you know, when those things come up, and I am not trying to hold anything back, I've been accused publicly and privately of doing that, I am not going to take that ever again. The agenda does not preclude anybody from voicing their opinion to you as a council collectively or individually, so. I will remind you that the ordinance, or the rules, say you can request it, any two of you, I will honor that request with, again, if Bob came up with the statue, I probably would not put that on the agenda, but Bob could come up and speak as a resident, so I'm not stopping anybody.
But wait a minute, how many votes do I have for a statue up here?
I'm just saying, if we...
Wow.
It could, it could bring a pigeon population into town, but anyhow...
Well, my point was, yes, you're, you're entitled to that, I, and I'm not saying you're not, I'm just saying, I don't know what has changed in the length of time that, since from the last time we discussed it, till now. Given a little more time, I could see that, but I don't think there's been a period of time that has allowed us to look at and go, okay, there's a lot of usage now, there's no accident, there's no problem, there's no whatever our problems were last time. But yeah, you're, you're perfectly fine with bringing it back, that's not what I was trying to say.
Well, and I, you know, it depends when it comes up, we will probably have eight or nine or ten months of the other cities going through this, that we would have more data to look at. It's probably a little early, I agree, but...
I just had one other question, then, too, as long as we're just having a good discussion. How do we decide what goes on the consent agenda versus regular agenda? Um, just sometime, is there a dollar limit, or...
No, it's, it's, it's considered non-controversial, and I want to tell you again, it's not me playing games, remove it from the consent agenda, tell me not, vote it down, approve it, it's just an, an effort to, to move the meetings along. It, it, it's, there's not a dollar figure, and we, you know, we have discussions internally in staff about whether it belongs there or not, and sometimes I say it does, and they convince me otherwise, or vice versa, so. Um, and, and I, I rephrased it tonight, because I said, anything held for separate discussion, before I asked for a motion, because you kind of got cut off last time. So, uh, apologize for that, but it, it's, it's subjective, honestly, but it does not mean you have to approve it, and as long as someone, any of you can hold anything for separate discussion. I don't have anything else, is there anything else? Okay. Can I please have a motion to adjourn? No, wait, I'm sorry, Beth, I don't have a second, do you have anything? I don't, you're fine, I, I cut Beth off.
No, I don't have anything, but again, on the consent agenda, sometimes it's somewhat subjective, and, you know, looking at its ordinary course and things that have already been, you know, going forward, but as always, a council member can pull anything off the consent for separate discussion, so.
Okay, thank you, so I do have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.